Adequate notice of this meeting was provided by sending such notice to the Asbury Park Press, the Middletown Patch, and the Middletown Township Public School District's website, and the posting of such notice at the Auguste Minor Administrative Offices and each elementary, middle, and secondary school in the district. Roll call.
Mrs. Caminiti, Mr. DeFranco, Mr. Donlin.
Here.
Mr. Dymo, Mr. Little.
Here.
Mrs. Minuies, Mrs. Ray.
Yeah, here.
Mrs. Stella.
Here.
Mrs. Rogers.
Here. I need a motion to go into executive session for the matters of personnel.
Madam President, can we also add pending litigation with the Team's Paraprofessional Unit regarding grievance arbitration decision and prospective options?
HIV and the contract extension for the YMCA.
Motion.
I'm starting it.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Okay, this meeting will now come to honor. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided by sending such notice to the Asbury Park Press, the Middletown Patch, and the Middletown Township Public School District website, and the posting of such notice at the Auguste Minor Administrative Offices and each elementary, middle, and secondary school in the district. Roll call.
Mrs. Caminiti, Mr. DeFranco, Mr. Donlin.
Here.
Mr. Dymo, Mr. Little.
Here.
Mrs. Minuies.
Yeah.
Mrs. Ray.
Here.
Mrs. Stella.
Here.
Mrs. Rogers.
Here. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before I call for public comment on agenda items only, I just want to say that while we did go through competitive contracting process, and in the interest of time, we have decided now that the school year is over, and members of the public wish to sign their children up for aftercare, that we do have a recommendation, and it's on the agenda, for the administration to extend YMCA's contract for one year. The benefit for us for this is that there will be no increase in cost to the YMCA customers for the 2019 to 2020 school year. The Y has agreed to offer a monthly dashboard that the board can review, charting their progress towards the goal of being fully staffed, no waitlist, and obtaining applicable licenses for additional spaces to the, and that the kids can use, not just the common areas. They've also offered educational services and additional ten floaters for the children's care. We will vote on this later tonight, so I just wanted to give you guys an update, so that you know what you're speaking about when you call up. And with that, I would like to open comments to people who want to speak on agenda items only. Okay, seeing nobody come to the mic, I need a motion to approve the minutes of May 15th and 22nd.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed on 5:15 in executive session.
I'm abstaining from that. Okay, all abstentions. I need a motion to approve the 2018 to 2019 quantitative and qualitative goals.
Summled.
Summled.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstentions. I'm abstaining. Okay, I have to read this part though. At the August 22nd, 2018 board meeting, the board approved five goals for the superintendent for the 2018 to 2019 school year. The board reviewed evidence of the completion of these goals with Dr. George at the June 19th BOE meeting, and this resolution is to memorialize the board's approval of the completion of his goals. The total compensation is $30,658.46, and this is the resolution.
I have a question.
No, don't have to.
Okay.
We reviewed that last week.
Speak one.
Yes. With Dr. George in executive session?
Yes, absolutely.
It was also reviewed again this evening in closed session as well.
It was this evening, yes it was. Yes.
And it was also, I believe, submitted electronically by the superintendent about a month ago to all board members.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the report of the Business Administrator and the Board Secretary for items one through five.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. I need a motion to approve the report of the Superintendent, items one through eight, and.
It's with the addendum, it's.
Addendum number nine and 10, which includes the before or after-care contract and HIV building grades for 2017 to 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes. I am going to be voting yes for number nine, but I just wanted out there that I'm just disappointed on how this process went down, that so many parents were so upset at the last minute that this happened. I would be voting for it, but I'm so, I'm really upset about how the process went down for our community.
That number nine is the report of the president that quantitative and qualitative.
No, I see it as superintendent.
The YMCA contractor.
Yes, okay.
I would like, I don't understand, you just wrote it on the approval of the goals, and now there's another approval of a resolution. What is that?
Is that one of these ways?
Yeah, this is either duplicate, or it's something, somebody did something out of order.
No, no, it was not. It was on an air dish, up in the. You asked for this to be added for clarification, because we.
The item, right, the item on the addendum was just the resolution that was related to the item that was on the original agenda. It was.
The full resolution.
Item on the original agenda was the approval of the goals. The item on the addendum was just the full verbiage of the resolution. It's the same item.
Correct. And also statutorily, the board's approval of the superintendent's achievement of the qualitative and quantitative merit goals that were mutually agreed to by the board and superintendent in the beginning of the 18th and school year, your resolution that was approved tonight acknowledging his successful achievement and/or exceeding those goals will be subject to executive county superintendent, and the payment that's referenced in his contract will be subject to the executive county superintendent's approval. So your approval was the first step, the second step is the county's approval.
All right, so there's nine, there's nine A and nine C. And we're doing the report of the superintendent, number one through 10.
So it doesn't include C.
Number nine C, nine A is.
Okay, roll call vote.
Mrs. Caminiti.
I'm abstaining on nine A, and I am voting yes on the rest.
Mr. Donlin?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mrs. Minuies?
I am voting no on number one, and no on number nine A, and I'm abstaining on number 10.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Stella?
Yes.
Mrs. Rogers?
Yes. Okay. I need a motion to approve student services items one through seven, and the addendum item number three, an additional continuous out-of-district placement, and number eight for school position contract.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
I'll raise the grade second, nine one, I'm abstaining on number five, elimination of the L O three class.
Okay.
I want to vote no.
Standing room.
No, I'm voting no.
Okay. I need a motion to approve facilities items one through two, and addendum number three and four for construction proposals.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I just want to relate to the board that we did have those items on the agenda. They are things that were included specifically in the 1920 budget, and they are purchases that would be made under cooperative bid awards. So because they are over the limit, we are, we are getting the board's approval on those, but they are specifically included in the budget.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay. I need a motion to approve curriculum items one through two.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Abstentions on number one.
I need a motion to approve finance items one through 11.
So moved.
Second.
I have a question on number 10, the substitute contract.
Substitute staffing services.
Yeah. How is, how is that actually going to work? Like, are we paying them a fee now that we have, we have to use them? Are we going to use them for everything, or just like we said before, just for positions that we're using?
We are going to use them for substitute services, more teaching positions, secretarial positions, paraprofessional positions. We would only use them for non-substitute positions, for paraprofessional positions that we are not able to recruit our own employees for. So that's, that's the, that's our.
And where's that our subs? The ones that we have, are we just, do we use them first before we go to the service?
No, we are going to be using the service for the substitute services.
So how about for our subs?
If they are going to be hired, if they're going to work in the district, they will be employed by the staffing services company.
That's not the understanding that I had.
Well, it was for substitute services.
But we said substitute services not on our own personnel. We're supposed to use our own personnel first.
But this is for substitutes, remember they couldn't find enough people to do it?
Yeah, I know, but we also have.
But now they're saying out-personnel people going. I want to know, is it benefits our people by going then? Do they get maybe health benefits? Do they get better pay? They do?
They, it's.
They do offer health benefits.
So can we, can we hear this, because.
Because now it makes sense.
RFP information is all available.
I don't care about, I don't care.
Including the main.
I don't care about the information. I want it out in public how this is going to work, because it was my understanding that if we had substitute teachers and substitute powers in our district that wanted to work, they would still be going through us, and any position we couldn't fill would be going through this. This is not what it sounds like it is right now.
No, it isn't. They're saying it is.
It's not that. And so it hasn't really been explained to us then how this service is actually going to work.
The request for proposal was for substitute staffing services for teaching positions, paraprofessionals, and secretaries.
Right, so when we talked about this in public, we said our employees would still be our employees. And, but no, they're saying they're not, Dr. George.
No, no.
Well, not substitutes.
Not substitutes. Our employees are going to be our employees.
Our substitutes are.
I understand what she's saying, but I'm.
Our substitutes that have always subbed. Another number of people getting up to the mic and asking that.
Our substitutes.
Our substitutes.
Our substitutes cannot fulfill the number of people that we have out on a daily basis. Our employees are our employees. Our substitutes did not fulfill the needs we have. As we stated, we have significant, it was, it was a very detailed discussion.
I understand that, Dr. George.
Of the number of unfilled positions that happen on a daily basis. And the main issue, the main issue is the fact that we have a responsibility to the IEP, and when one of our employees, and our employees, the person that we have in our position, is not available, then we need a substitute. We have a significant problem filling those vacancies. Therefore, the substitutes will be going through the contracted services. But the employees, which is what we said all along, are the ones that work for the district. It's not our intention to replace them. It's to, it's to, it's to provide a, a full substitute proposal. So we've, we've got out with someone that can do a better job recruiting and retaining substitutes to fill those vacancies.
I understand that, and I, I know when I said I voted for this, that I understood we cannot let any position go unfilled. But it was also my understanding that our substitute powers and our substitute teachers were still going to be going through the regular process of ASAP or whatever, and when we couldn't use them to fill, we would use this service. But now that's not the way it is at all. If they all have to go work for this service. That was my understanding, and I'd asked this question several times, because I did support the service, because I know that we don't have enough subs. But this is not how I was told it was going to work.
Because.
So I don't even think our substitutes realize that, because now that they have to go through this agency.
So if I'm a sub who works in the district, now I have to, so I have this new company. That wasn't clear to the board.
No.
That's true. So maybe you could figure it out for us, or maybe we could table it.
Because I don't want to fire our employees. I, I don't want them to have to go to an agency if they don't want to. We made it clear to them, they packed the room that night, that they would still be going through the same way that they got their jobs.
I just want to state again that the recommendation for the administration is so that we can implement the services of the IEP with fidelity, which we've been very clear that we're not able to do at this point. So I think it's important for the board to understand.
And I think we do that.
We do, I do.
But it was explained in different ways to us. Was it explained.
No, I think, I think the focus is on employees and not the students in the IEP.
Oh, that's not true. That is absolutely not true.
So maybe.
That's the focus of this discussion.
Let me ask you, if I may, just sort of frame the issue as I have heard it. The district, as of today's date, has employees, or individuals who are employed as substitutes. They're employed by the school district on a per diem basis. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. There has been an identified challenge, an issue with that pool of substitutes being sufficient to cover the classrooms, the special ed assignments, the individual assignments.
The senior was presented.
And so therefore, and there aren't enough substitutes to cover when people call out. So the question is whether the recommendation and the consensus of the IEP was to, I'll say, outsource the substitute function and do it all through a third-party vendor, or was it to supplement the in-house function with a third-party vendor? I'm just framing the issue. And so if, does this resolution here, I'll say, outsource the function and follow everyone through the third-party vendor? If so, at your answer. Or does this resolution retain the district employees, the S subs, per diem employees, and then supplement it?
This, this resolution is simply to approve a contract with ESS LLC to provide staffing services to the district for substitute teaching, paraprofessional, and secretarial positions. And if we have other positions that we cannot fill with our own recruiting, we can utilize them also. It is, you know, it's just our district's contract to utilize their services. The resolution doesn't specify, you know, which position, you know, what positions you utilize them for, but the intention was, you know, to utilize them for our substitute services for the district.
So.
I mean, it's, I'm sorry, it's simply a resolution to approve the contract to utilize them. Their billing to us is going to just be dependent upon our utilization of them.
And the rates are very low, definitely.
The question is, we have an active substance that people sign. So regardless of whether there's 20, 30, 40 people, we don't adapt this first and then to the services, or we say there's 20, 30 people.
That was how the board understood it originally.
You're going on somewhere else. Now please get in touch with the state agency. That's how you'll be your position.
And I think the intention of the, when we were putting out the RFP was to utilize the service for our staffing substitutes.
I have the same understanding that Mr. Donlin has in terms of your views, are subs first, and I think the high school we highlighted in particular was a difficulty, so we might go right for certain areas we know we're not going to get it.
That was for regular power positions. We were saying that.
Yeah, maybe I misunderstood them.
Right, we were saying that we had, we had certain paraprofessional, regular, non-substitute positions that were.
Does anyone remember talking about the tribal apply system, that can they still apply for jobs? And they're talking about fees and how much they can get paid for the service. Yes, maybe either way I misunderstood, but I have the same understanding, I think.
I have the same understanding.
It would still, it would still be the same system, the substitutes would still apply through the base up.
But they would have to.
That's not with company. Right, if we utilize the staffing services.
So they don't get prioritized.
That's where I think the misunderstanding for all of us really lies, because I remember this discussion in full, and we were all talking about it besides people who were coming up to the microphone, and I think everybody's impression is the same, is that we were going to try our best to actually fill those positions with our own people, or our own system before going out. And I think no one is questioning the fact that these positions have to be filled. No one is saying that. And I think there is a misunderstanding in terms of what happened.
We had discussed that with the power positions that we were looking, like the regular, non-substitute power positions, that we were looking to fill on our own, and we even used the staffing services if we were unable to recruit for those. We had some difficult, difficult shifts at the high school and so forth that we have trouble recruiting for. And that would be something that we may look for assistance to the staffing company, but the RFP alone was for substitute services.
So, we table this?
Yeah, let's table it to the next meeting, because they don't start until September anyway.
Well.
We're relying on them for staffing.
Right, we were planning on using the services to help with the ESM.
We could not get enough power to staff the ESM.
But. Well, that's, that's, that's under the process of what's happened in the whole last week, Mrs. Minuies. So we've been doing everything we can to recruit our people from within. We're hiring for the beginning of July. It's this time of year to evaluate those processes. So in all fairness, this is something that has just been developing this week.
Dr. George, there's such a lack of communication going on. It's not even funny, because everybody's saying pretty much the same thing. We spoke to the public about it when the parents got up. We said to them, no, we're going, you're going to still go through us, and we're going to take care of it. We're only going to use the service for a position that we couldn't sell, and subs we couldn't sell. The communication has changed since then, because you just said it yourself. Mrs. Pincus, this doctor shaking her head, saying that's the way it was supposed to be, and we're all sitting here saying, that's not how we heard it.
Okay.
So there's really.
So I think it's, I think it's all of our, all of our intention to utilize our people from our own community for these positions. So, you know, duly noted by everyone. I think what's important right now is we need the support of this service to be able to implement our extended school year program for the summer. The question is whether or not, and I think we can, it's an administrative function to be able to come up with a system that makes sure that we utilize the employees that are on our list prior to going to the other people. And I think what we can do is sit down with ESS and we'll be able to clarify that, you know, for the board when we come back, how we've implemented it. But that, from my perspective, is more an administrative function that we understand from a direction of the board that we want it, we, basically, you want to see a two-pronged list, an in-house substitute list, and then on top of that, how we're supplementing that outside. So let's, let us have the opportunity to come up with a way that we can implement something like that, and.
Dr. George, if we vote on this, and it's a board, we're voting to outsource. Your word is your word, but a contract is a contract.
We are, we are simply voting on a contract with ESS to utilize them for staffing services. That would be under our direction. It's Dr. George is saying, you know, it's up to us how much we do utilize them.
The confusion is how it's going to work. We vote on this, we have no longer a say, because we board approved it.
We board approved the contract, but we certainly would be able to direct the firm. They only are going to do the services that we ask for.
I think the direction from the board is pretty clear, too. What you expect from us is you expect from us that we keep an in-house substitute, and then we supplement that. So, you know, it's our intention to implement that with fidelity.
But what we expect, though, is for what you tell us to be then what we vote on. You can't change it between the two dates, and then us be expected to just vote anyway, because we're all going through the wall like this.
Madam President.
I think that's the.
May I suggest, just based upon the dialogues going back and forth, I think it's all productive and constructive, there's a few personnel issues and questions that have come up that I have, that I would feel more comfortable addressing in closed executive session versus in public. So if perhaps we can pull this off for now, move on the rest of the agenda, and then discuss in a closed session that clarifies some of these legal personnel related issues, and then come back out, and the board can take whatever action needs appropriate, whether to vote on the agenda item as presented, whether to table or what have you.
Okay.
So basically, we're not taking, we're just going to pull it from right now, we're going to hold it for a discussion in closed session after we get the rest of the meeting.
Okay.
That's up, that's up.
Let's save it till later, so people can go home if they want, you know. Okay, so next, I need a motion to approve student activities items one through.
Can I just back up? We have items one through 11, but could we take a vote on items one through 11 except for number nine?
Whoever moved it, you said that you would consent to the amendment of the motion to approve that one item for especially in closed session.
I'm sorry, number, number 10.
Number 10 is, is off of that list now. Well, it's still on the agenda for tonight, we'll talk about it in closed session, verify a few points. I'm avoiding the other.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. I need a motion to approve student activities items one through three.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. I need a motion to approve the personnel items. It's one through 17, and also the addendum items through 24. Um, roll call vote.
Mrs. Caminiti.
Okay. I'm voting on the job instructor, number 20. I am voting no. On item number 16, A B and C. If we tweaked a little bit, and I don't know how much I can say, but this is a contract. It's number 16, A B and C.
Assistant Superintendent, Healer Resources, Curriculum Instruction, Assistant Superintendent, Student Activities Services, Business Administrator, Labor Secretary.
So I don't know how much I can say, but if they would tweak a little bit, I don't, I am not in favor of three additional vacation days, and I'm not in favor of.
Well, let's discuss that in closed executive session, because it is a matter of personnel. The general proposition, individual employment contracts for non-bargaining staff members are subject to annual renewal. If I'm not mistaken, the individuals have already been essentially appointed. This is just.
I'm not saying no to their appointment.
I understand you are, I'm just saying, I'm just trying procedurally, this is the annual contract that goes along with that appointment, to the extent that there is a recommended salary increase, to the extent that there are other terms and conditions of employment in the contract that you have questions about, which really will fall under, not just negotiations with the individual, but just a personnel related discussion, that would be more appropriate in closed executive session.
But to be fair to the rest of the board, they have already discussed it, so.
Excuse me?
To be fair to the rest of the board, they have already discussed.
Who's they?
The rest of the board. They have discussed it.
Okay, so.
It's just opinions.
That was an.
But those opinions are better, excuse me, more appropriately from a legal and ethical standpoint, shared in closed executive session, not in public. So to the extent a member was not present, that's their fault, as long as the majority of.
No, 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 I was present.
I'm saying. I'm saying, I assume based upon the question you learned, because you said other board members discussed it already. So I presume you were aggressive. So therefore, if it was discussed in closed session, it stays in closed session until the need for confidentiality exists.
Okay, very simple.
So I would just, my advice is not to discuss it in public so that you can be compliant with the...
I'm voting no.
That's your problem, that's your problem, thank you.
16 and 20, I'm voting no.
Mr. Donlin?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mrs. Menus?
No on 16 and 20.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Bella?
Yes.
Mrs. Robinson?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to old business. Okay, moving on to new business.
I have a few things for new business. The end of the year is a very busy time. But I had the opportunity, I didn't get a chance to come to the meeting last week because I had a graduation. But I attended the ribbon cutting for the new greenhouse for High School North. And I'm beyond impressed with, well, first of all, anybody who can garden because I can't keep anything alive. But it was amazing what these kids accomplished. They were involved with the grant. I also attended Jazz Fest, which is a jazz festival for Thompson, Thorn, and Bay Shore and the two high schools. Again, they sounded like professionals. I attended several graduations and I thought they were absolutely beautiful. And I also attended the Miltown Arts Center, Arts Academy performance at the end of the year, which was also amazing. So it's been busy, but for any of you, if you guys get the chance to come out and go to these things, you would, you know, be very impressed with what these kids can accomplish.
I assure fans, how many people are here to discuss concerns and communication that I've received in the last 24 to 48 hours about class size? So in all fairness, to, you know, make it clear to the board that this is a concern. So this is something that is reviewed on a monthly basis and where we are with sections and schools with the board. We provide like a dashboard of exactly where we are, sections, classes across the district, and we review that. So I know that's a concern right now. How many people hear from Lincroft? Okay, significant number of people here, their concern is Lincroft. And we have class sizes as they relate on current sectioning that have ticked up in grades kindergarten through third grade, four and five is a little bit lower. So we're going to discuss, just give you an idea about what that process looks like and where we are in that process. So if Mrs. Walker and Ms. Pecos, and I'll chime in, we'll talk about the process that we discussed in closed session with the board on where we are with student addition and sectioning as it relates across the district, okay?
Every year we go through this process. It starts with March, in the door. A little bit earlier, we open up registration in the door and we look at pulling our classes down in the door for a second. We start to look at what the sizes are and adjust our sections based, I'm sorry, adjust our sections, adjust our sections based on the numbers. This happens throughout the summer because we have registrations going on. We are still identify students that are registered and are in classes as perhaps needing, you know, special education services outside the regular classroom, ESL services. There are still many people moving out of the district or from one school to another because families have moved. And that happens over the summer quite often. So this is really a fluid process that we work all summer long. We visit this at least every week. And no decisions are made on staffing until probably around the end of July, beginning of August is when we start solidifying our staffing needs. And we do have, you know, teachers available to move into sections as needed. Now, we do have our class size caps that we do adhere to, which is the 25 in grades K1 and 2 and 27 in 3 to 5, which we have been using all this year. And we're going to continue next year. This was discussed on our budgeting process. We discussed it last year and this year. Just so you know, the process is always continuing up until the end of the summer, really.
So in the conversations that I had, I made it clear that that's something that is evaluated. I think also some of the concerns I had in reading emails and communicating with family members, parents, was that was this really a Lincroft issue or was this an issue that impacts multiple schools? And I assure you, it isn't an issue, those class size caps, which we have talked about in previous summers. As a matter of fact, I mentioned to a couple of people, there was an article in the Asbury Park Press on July 26, 2018, where we talk about this very same thing right at the time when we were voting on the addendum to the budget because of the fact that we were, there was a reduction in state aid and how we were going to manage that and what that was, what that was going to look like. So, but I will say that this, last year was not the first year where we actually did put caps in place. We have done that in the past. Whether we add another teacher or whether it's a cap on a current grade level and then the other students beyond that cap go to a different school, a neighboring school, one that is geographically close to the school in question and one in which we have bus routes provided for them to do that, depends on the total number of students that is affected or impacted by that. So that's another clarifying point. But certainly after we've come to the end of the agenda, we'd be more than happy to hear from community members on this topic. I think prior to us going to closed session, I think that's your intention, right?
There's just one more thing, and it's that in that article in the Asbury Park Press, it said grades four to five, upper elementary. And now I think that it's the third grade parents that are concerned. So I don't know if you would let us speak to that before the board can speak as well.
Because we only ever agreed to vote the fifth grade 27 cap. And I realize that...
Interesting. When you say upper elementary, you have fourth and fifth, so I think that might be the issue.
Yeah, now it's third grade.
Maybe the article was... I don't remember what the time went ahead. Yeah, I only remember fourth grade as well.
I mean, not bad enough. We all know that was bad enough, but the situations arise. And I also think that we got to find a better way to communicate when we're going to these numbers. To let them know ahead of time because of... What I hear from people is, they understand, they don't like the 27, but they understand it. It's the way it's communicated. Like if we know we're watching a class and it could be to 27, maybe we should say in the beginning of June or before school gets out, hey, listen, call a meeting of those class parents and say, "Listen, this is a true possibility, but here's what we're going to do to support the classroom teacher." Which, Dr. George, you do a great job in supporting the classroom teachers with all our specialists. I think to ease the minds of people, they need to know what it is we're going to do for that class and for those kids because we can't go any lower than 27. So I think the communication needs to, you know, be loud and clear. And I'm really concerned about third grade because I always, you know, I didn't like the idea we're doing it, but we did it because we knew we needed to. But third grade, that's a little young. Fourth and fifth grade, we always talked about upper elementary, you know, they're getting ready to switch classes for different subjects, so for that, you know, it's kind of preparing them to move up at third grade.
I think third grade's a tough one too.
Yeah.
You know, you have to move around. But apart from that, I do think we should get information out of people earlier. I think I've been asking for that. Like I think that obviously some of the numbers changed, as I think this Pecos was talking about. But, you know, I've been on the other end of these things, on the other end of this again, and it's not easy. When you run into that, you go from three sections to two sections, it's a different adjustment, right? And I agree that we probably should think about that or clarify that. I know everyone here, we've been all concerned about that.
Well, I think as, what was, I appreciate everybody's perspectives on this. I think what we were trying to clarify is that, and part of what I clarified with parents today is that nothing's set in stone on exactly how many sections there are in that right now. It's too, I know we liked it earlier, but it's not actually valid data earlier. Because again, you still need to know what the impact is across the district in all 12 elementary schools so that we can efficiently and effectively utilize the staff we have, number one. And this is that time of year where there's a lot of students moving in and students moving out. So we wait a little bit later to get a clearer picture. I welcome the discussion, I welcome the parent input. We just, we have to be careful about, we can have the discussion earlier. It just, it begins to really clarify itself as stated in the beginning of August, not at the end of June, so. But I think people need to know to the point...
I think seeing what's out there and how it's working, I think you only see part of the picture or you don't see your picture until, I've been asking for a while, that we kind of show the information to the extent we can, it doesn't cross any lines in terms of, you know, violating anybody's like personal rights. But I think there's information that we have, it falls under, to me, the capacity from last planning process where we said we're going to release as much information as possible so people can see what it looks like. And I know, I know you were saying like it changes, you don't know who's going to go where or what, but it does become a very dramatic change when you go from three to two or something like that, or you're not anticipating your classes will up. Like if three new kids move in, you know that, and now you're a little hard.
I think it's the reassurance, really. I mean, we all know that we've done this for a few years and everybody I've spoken to, that's what they say. This isn't the first time this has happened, it's gone on for a few years. But, and I know that you don't know until the end of July or August, but to have an idea of where it's going to happen or where it could happen. I would much rather say to these parents, "Listen, there's a good possibility that you're going to, you know, your child's going to be in class at 27." And the best case scenario is that doesn't happen. You know, just prepare them, let them know what it is we're going to do to support the kids with all of our meetings, that was math stuff, all the support that going to the classroom to help that teacher with those two extra kids. I mean, it's not just helping those two extra kids, it's helping all 27 of them. But we do have a lot of resources that, you know, we can utilize. It's just reassurance and communication, not finding out from another parent that, hey, this, you know, we found out our class is going to be 27 from another parent. If that's the case.
Okay, so to further clarify, I get your point. So to further clarify why that's stated. We have certain students due to receiving additional services or being evaluated for other programs that we know are in a number currently, but there's a really good chance in just a couple of weeks they're not going to be in those numbers. That's part of the issue. But I think the overall general conversation about where we are with sections and numbers, it would probably be helpful if that was, based on also where I was here from parents today, the discussions I had, the emails that I read, if that was part of just a general practice of the end of the year parent organization meetings. I also heard from parents today, it would be helpful if some of those end of the year parent meetings were in the evening for working parents. And all of those kinds of things are absolutely discussed in our administration, I think. For some of our principals, they do some of the meetings in the day and then other meetings in the evenings, and that's how they get the best participation. But maybe that last one needs to be in the evening or the one where the updates on this be at the evening ones and be part of the discussion. So that's, that's something we certainly can talk about, the impact of our principals. And we can make sure we're consistently having those conversations in the schools, principals with their parent organizations next year as well.
And the one other item, in terms of the size of themselves, I know what came up last year, I think what the state readjusted their numbers and they readjusted our numbers down further. So we talked about it, it was a budget, more of a budget conversation, I believe, than it was anything else about, for example, the 27 and 3 through 5. So maybe, I think Ms. Menus might be suggesting to revisit the 3 through 5 for 27? Because that came up during the budget, that was a numbers, I think that was a numbers.
I definitely voted to put 33 into the 27 position.
I'm not saying it's right, but I'm pretty sure that's where it came out for the numbers. But maybe we need to revisit to clarify or however we want to state it, but...
We can look at that.
Yeah, I mean, we should think about that.
And with the strategic plan, all of you that are up here today, I love the enthusiasm, please come to the forums, yeah, please come to the forums and get involved in the strategic plan. Because we are in a budget crisis and we're going to have to make some difficult decisions. And I'd like to do it as a community, rather than pointing the fingers at each other. Let's work together on this, that's what we're hoping for. So it's really exciting to see you all here. Did any of the other board members want to say something for our opening mic?
No, I just wanted to mention again about the strategic plan. I'm a mom in the district also, and I don't like large class sizes, of course. I'm also a teacher. And of course, I prefer smaller class sizes, I think that they're best. But now we have an opportunity with the strategic plan for more community involvement and to have all of your voices heard. So please, you know, stay tuned, find out when the forums are. We have committees and we'll need parent input, so.
Okay, all that being said, I'm going to open up the microphone to public comment. I see a lot of new faces. I just want you to know that we do cut you off at three minutes. If we cut you off and there's something you want to share with us, email us. We're very responsive very quickly, so. One more thing, we do limit it to 30 minutes total, just so you know.
Here in Saiki, Miltown, sorry, I just wanted to go real quickly before everybody else talks about class size. The agenda had power professionals recommended for reemployment. And then there was a separate list of power professionals that are on a priority list. Is the priority list substitutes?
They generally are.
Because those are spectacular people I've seen on this list that I would want with my child in a second. A few of the names that I know. And there are a lot of them. I just wanted, before you went back in closed session, the other thing for the record, because our agenda or the one that's online doesn't have a name of who you're hiring, it just says TBD.
Right, it's ESS LLC, and we did post a report with the results of the evaluations on the website last week. So it's ESS.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to manage expectations from public comment, you can put them in. We're going to let members of the public to speak, make your comment, ask your questions, et cetera. The board members administration will refrain and answer at the end of that individual comment or at the end of the whole process. So as many people as possible can give their comments and views, thank you.
Hi, Jessica, okay. Okay, hi, thank you for hearing us today. My name is Megan Rose. I am a parent to children at Lincroft Elementary School. I'm from this town. My husband and I both went to Lincroft, Thompson, Miltown South. My father sat where Dr. George is sitting as superintendent at times. And I know these are very difficult decisions. Since growing up, my husband and I said, "We don't want to raise our kids here. We don't want to be those people who stay in town." So we left and came back, like everyone in Miltown does. But the reason we came back was for the education. That is clear, okay? My father poured his heart and soul into this town. I wanted my kids to reap the benefits. And I felt like they did at a time. Yet here we all are. For the first time in my life, when I hear parents say, "We're pulling our kids out of Lincroft. We're going to St. Leo's. We're pulling our kids out of, not Swam, we're going to St. Mary's." I get it. And as a public school teacher, it sickens me that I understand and clearly see the quality of education in Lincroft and across the town is diminishing. Anyone with an education background cannot tell me that 27 eight-year-olds are getting a quality education. a quality education. To ask teachers, I think Ms. Stella, you said you were a teacher, to deliver quality education to 27 eight-year-olds is asking way too much. Dr. George, I've sat here and you've said many times, we are one town, we're not Middletown South, Middletown North, north isn't better than south, south isn't better than north, but that is not true. There is inequity in education in this town, and the Board of Education is hiding behind it. There has not been transparency here. Ms. Minuas talked about communication, Mr. Little talked about, we have data, we have data, where is it? Parents at Lincroft found out about this through IEP meetings, others at kindergarten orientation. The rule of thumb in education is you tell all, or you tell none. That is a serious lapse in judgment. I do not believe it was just from Lincroft, I believe it was across the board in Middletown. We are here tonight to tell you, Lincroft children deserve a better education, and Middletown children deserve a better education. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tracy Garrett, I'm a parent of a nine-year-old in Lincroft going into fourth grade. I just completed my 25th year of teaching, can't believe that. The first part of that career was spent as an elementary teacher. Now, for the last 18 years, I've been a professor of teacher education at Rider University. So I'm very intimately involved with education, I know the system ins and out, not from an administrative perspective, from a teaching perspective. And I can assure you that class size is the single, or not the single, but one of the most significant influences on instruction in the classroom. I'm upset about the transparency, but I'm much more upset about the decision to go to 27 in the classrooms. But my professional opinion aside, let's turn to the district's mission statement. The mission statement clearly states that the following is one of their key tenets: We believe we must function as a united community to meet every student's unique and individual needs in a safe and nurturing educational environment. That's a bold statement, because the key to meeting that goal is to differentiate instruction in the classroom. However, the key to differentiate instruction is really knowing your students, assessing their needs, and using that assessment to drive your instructional decisions, and then providing various pathways and points of entry for students to meet those instructional goals. This takes time, it takes space. I don't care how good of a teacher you are, those things are not available when there are 27 students in a classroom. There's just no way effective differentiation can take place with 27 students in a class. Therefore, by increasing class size up to 27 students, Middletown is setting up students, specifically, I don't know how many schools it affects across the board, but they're unable to meet their own key goal in their mission statement. In fact, by choosing to increase class size, you're also choosing to do the following: to provide students with less individual attention and interaction with the teachers, to provide teachers with less flexibility to use different instructional approaches, provide more noise and distractions, I don't know how many of you spend time in an elementary school, and decrease students' ability to concentrate. I'm a classroom management specialist, and I'm going to tell you, there's going to be more classroom management problems. So I don't think the answer is you put an extra resource teacher in there, you pull someone out. I'm talking about the day-to-day interaction, every day, all day in that school with 27 students is too much. So one final point is let's not forget the student voice in this process. I'm part researcher as my job, and I always like to capture that student voice, so I went out and asked a couple of quick students from Lincroft Elementary what they thought of having up to 79 more students in their class, a couple quotes. Desmond, an eight-year-old, "Mom, my classroom is already way too loud." Jason, a nine-year-old, "Mom, I think it's obvious what'll happen, you'll get much less attention from the teacher." And a final one, David, who is eight-years-old, "There are so many kids in my class already, it sounds like a pack of wild wildebeests." So I urge you to consider this decision of the 27 students and how that impacts effective practice. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lori Stega Sanzio, I'm a parent to an upcoming third grader in Lincroft and a seventh grader in Thompson. I'm speaking tonight to ask Dr. George and the board to reconsider the practice of reducing grade sections and increasing class sizes to the state maximums of 25 students for K-2 and 27 for grades three to five. I was told my daughter's class next year would be in alignment with this approved Board of Ed policy of 27 kids in third grade. When my son was in Lincroft, his grade was approximately 75 students, but because there were four sections in my son's class, there were about 19, 20 students. My daughter's grade this year, again, 75 students approximately, however, only three sections were created, so her class was 25. There is an inequality in the education that is being given to my two children in my household, although the grade numbers have remained relatively stable. There is an inequality in the education among the students in this town. Now, this year, Navisink second grade, 16 to 18 students, BevU, 17, but my daughter had 25, and next year, 27. To be united as one town, we have to fix this inequality while making the class sizes appropriate. By adding a class section, my daughter's grade would go from 27 to 20, a more appropriate class size number for an elementary student in the third grade. One that is in alignment with the research, which states, "Class sizes of 20 and under have been shown to increase student achievement in the lower grades. Gains from the class size reduction in the early grades continue for students in the upper grades, even if the upper grade class size is increased. These students are less likely to be retained and more likely to have better grades. Please consider the long-term cost of increasing the class size. Special education costs will continue to rise as more students will need support. As an educator involved with special education myself, I know that the elementary years are crucial. Students are having a hard time paying attention to their teacher with the sheer number of students in the class. More time is being spent on classroom management rather than differentiated instruction. These high numbers create less opportunity for individualized learning and teacher attention for all the students. The single most valuable resource that you can provide to our students is appropriate access to their teacher by reducing the class size. I believe there is no other support that's going to help this. Additionally, consider if these class sizes are in alignment with your published mission and core beliefs, which includes meeting every student's unique and individual needs in a nurturing educational environment, providing all students with equitable opportunities for personal development while supporting the success of our children. Do these class sizes support the success of the elementary students in our district? Thank you for your time, and I really hope that you will reconsider the policy to create more sections for the elementary students at Lincroft School and other schools in the district.
I just wanted to speak to one thing, because some of you might know, in reference to comparing BevU to Lincroft, you are always welcome to speak to Dr. George, and if you want to transfer your children to one of those schools, you are welcome to. I know it's not for everybody, but I just, I just wanted to, I just wanted to offer that.
I know, but I would like to respond to that, to show the dressing room.
I'm sorry, ma'am, with all due respect, this really isn't a dialogue. You were given your opportunity to speak, the next person can speak. I'm not trying to be disrespectful to you, we have to maintain order in the progress of the meeting. Okay, ma'am, you can go.
Hey, my name is Heather Muto, I am a parent to three children, and incoming ninth grader, seventh grader, and third grader. I am concerned about the class size in Lincroft Elementary School. My son complains about his class of 25 students being too physically crowded and too noisy. Now that number is going to increase to 27. The NEA supports a class size of 15, citing substantial academic gains for K-3 students in smaller classes compared to students in larger classes. Those in kindergarten classes of 13 to 17 students were about one month ahead of their counterparts in classes of 22 to 25 students at the end of the year, and by the end of second grade, those in the smaller classes were about two months ahead. Even when instructional aids were present in the larger classes, the students did not perform as well as those in the smaller classes. As an educator for over 20 years, I have seen the changes in philosophies and programming that impact classrooms. There is a greater emphasis on differentiated instruction and small group instruction through workshop models, increasing the need for small class size to allow the teacher to implement this effective instruction. In addition to the differentiation required for all students, the identification of gifted and talented students, and the action plans of struggling learners place an increased emphasis on differentiation that becomes an insurmountable task for a teacher of a high population. There is also a greater awareness of students' social-emotional learning, which is enhanced when relationships are built in small populations. Middletown's own mission statement emphasizes the need to meet every student's unique and individual needs in a safe and nurturing educational environment. That becomes more challenging in the larger population. 27 students is too high for your maximum. Financially, I also worry about the long-term impact that this will have on the district. With larger class sizes, there are going to be more concerns with student behavior, and as previously mentioned, with a negative impact on learning. This will no doubt lead to more INRS cases. That will mean additional time out of the classroom for the teacher to attend meetings, further negatively impacting student learning, an increase in the cost of substitutes for this meeting, the additional hours of the school's social worker or guidance counselor to handle these new cases. Following new action plans will also add an additional burden to the teachers already overburdened by such large class sizes. These additional INRS cases, along with the decreased learning of a high-population classroom, could also lead to more referrals to child study team at a cost to the district. And if these students qualify for special education, it will add to the skyrocketing costs of special education. This negative impact on student learning will likely lead to the hiring of more paraprofessionals and math, reading, and behavior specialists to help teachers meet the needs of their struggling students. The short-term financial savings can be offset by the expense of the supports needed to counteract the damage of the large class size. The large class sizes are not uniform throughout Middletown School District. This leads me to be concerned that not all Middletown students are being offered equality in their educational experiences. Board members, many of you ran on the platform of equality throughout the district. I hope that you stay true to your campaign ideals and make sure that there is equality throughout the class sizes in all Middletown schools. And finally, I ask for transparency. In doing my research, I struggle to find the necessary data. Specifically, what is the policy for class size? That seems to be a question earlier. The district webpage only led me to policy 2312, which states that the superintendent will give guidelines. Where can I find the actual board-approved policy that includes the maximum number for the Middletown classes? Where can I find the actual class sizes of the Middletown elementary classes? Without this information being made public, we have only to rely on counting photos and yearbooks and asking parents and other schools to do the same. Please tell me how to find all of the information on the average class size for each grade at each school. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, I'm Dennis Ford, my son is Noah, going into third grade. I have a little bit of a different perspective, being a New York City administrator, and kind of understanding enrollment and knowing that we start the process in February, and also know about historical data, and knowing that Middletown is an intact community, meaning that we have people that move in and out, but it's not a school district where you have a larger cell population, people are leaving and going back to their country. So you probably have those numbers of how many new admits come over the counter in the summer. So this shouldn't be such a surprise, because I do this strategic planning myself in February in my book. But I'm going to come from the perspective of one child, my child. I remember Dr. George on the first day of school, when you said to my partner and I, we only, when my son was lost on the bus, well, out of 7,000 children, only one got lost. I never forgot that. As an educator and as a father, my child would not be the one who will be lost. Kindergarten, I said, he only has 10 months to get kindergarten, he had to be a lift. First grade, I was promised there would be a lift. I said, only has 10 months to get first grade, struggling. Second grade, we started off the beginning of the year, and I said to them, my chancellor said to me, be a champion for children. I said, who's the champion for my child here? 27 children in a class, in a community like this, where you have active parents. And by the way, the test scores for Lincroft Elementary are not at the same rate as their peers. There was no communication about this, but we get ahead in open dialogue. And I may have ended up to have to acquiesce and say, I understand why we need to go in this direction. I get it. I don't know why we have to do this. I don't understand the enrollment piece of it. So someone needs to explain to us and communicate with us. If I asked all these parents out here, what are the instructional goals for Lincroft Elementary for the 2018, 2019, can anyone answer them? Isn't that a problem? How are we moving instruction? I've sat at meetings where they've presented, where they've said to us, reading levels are not important, we don't go by reading levels. I was a teacher's college coach, a lead. You give, we're giving the teachers units of study and walking away, there's no coaches that are coming in. So what reading specials, or what other specialists can we offer 27 children in the classroom? When I don't think that the staff is adequately trained for what they currently have, let alone additionally adding this. I have a big problem with this, there is no communication. I can tell you when girls on the run is, and when band is practicing, but I can't tell you anything instructional. Why? This is a school. One child, my child, is one too many children to be lost, and it is a shame to be sitting here. I shouldn't have, I'm a resident of Bam Hollow, and all I hear is that I want to go down the block and go to another school, there are better things happening there. Megan's point, we constantly keep saying, people want to go to other schools. Why?
Grabbing your, you're honoring us, thank you.
So I think that what we should all hear tonight is that we're willing to have a conversation and take this back to the school, and sit down with us and say, we hear that there's a lack of communication, and we're going to fix it. That, I think, would be an appropriate response to everyone who came out tonight on a Wednesday night. Thank you.
Good evening, and I thank you for your attention and having us all here tonight. In addition to many folks here, my name is Matt, I am a Lincroft resident as well, my wife and I. Matt Paprick, and my wife and I are here tonight, we have two children in Lincroft, a soon to be fourth grader, son, and a first grader, daughter. And earlier, we raised hands to see how many folks here were from Lincroft. Can I ask the Lincroft families to please raise your hand if you were, okay, thank you, if you were aware about this class size three weeks ago? One, two. Communication. We talked about it a little bit with the substitutes. I was here last week to see what the agenda and how the format went. It was very clear about the YMCA as well, lack of communication, lack of communication. When were we supposed to find out about this? Was this supposed to be the first day of school, or class lists? So we just urge you to please, as we spoke today as well, to keep in mind that we would like to be in the know about these types of things. 25 kids per class, let alone 27, really offers less individualized instruction, and these are very formative years for these children. For some of these classes, we're not talking about 18, I'm sorry, 23, bump it up to 25, we're talking 18 to 25 or 26. That's a 30% increase, a total change in class dynamic. Some of our other neighbors brought up some interesting points, I'm not going to beat a dead horse, but clearly in our mind, 25 to 27 is really, really high, and lacks the attention that these kids deserve. One other neighbor also mentioned that when some of you ran for this position, I have a couple quotes here, not to mention names, but some mentioned I want to be the voice in the community. Another one mentioned, we have 12 elementary schools, three middle, two high schools that should be brought to a level par. And lastly, and this is my favorite, we cannot allow already large maximum class sizes to increase, which will further decrease supportive individual learning of all children. What's going on here then? How is this happening if that's what you wanted to be in this seat for? To control these things? And we understand there's state funding, we understand there's some things that maybe we need to work with you on, we're willing to do that, we're here, we want to work with you, but this to hit us like, it's like a brick on the side of the head. Well, what do you mean, we have 25 kids next year, we have 18 this year. I want to let you know what our son said when he heard about this. When we told him this class size is going to increase, he said, Daddy, Mommy, there's some days I barely get called on already. They want to get called on. So now we're calling on you, and you superintendent, to please, listen to our voices, and let's see what we can do to make this better. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Liz Turner Cocker, I went to Lincroft School myself, and my husband and I, my husband went through Leonardo Grade School, we are happily living in Lincroft at this moment. And I wanted to, as you've heard, Middletown's policy and proposed actions to increase in class size do not correlate. 27 students is not a realistic solution for children counting on you to see that they get a good education. So I will skip right to three points. Lincroft Middletown had Bam Hollow and Fort Ponds built, and Lincroft lives there. Lincroft, number one, Lincroft Bam Hollow alone is sending $30,000 per home. Lindcroft, number one, Lindcroft Bam Hollow alone is sending $30,000 per home in tax revenue to Middletown Township. Number two, Middletown Township Board of Education is receiving 70% of these taxes. Number, point number two. At the same time, qualified local teachers are lining up to be hired. I know many people who have had their applications for years, and they're waiting. They're waiting on hearing from you. They're clamoring for a callback. And by the way, how any of them with a class size of 27 eight-year-olds is going to meet all of their unique and individual needs is a Board of Education, as is the Board of Education belief, is a question unto itself. Point number three, 0% money is being spent to address this issue. No teachers are being hired, and almost inconceivably to me, who went to the exact same physical version of Lindcroft School in 1979, for the first of many years, no second-story expansion or anything like it is being considered as they have been, as the school has been added to, as the population and the school have been added to, and we need to rectify populations at other district elementary schools. Hence, beyond me that that hasn't been discussed at all. Or perhaps it has been, and transparency is just more of a point. Lindcroft's kids are getting a very short end of the stick with this move. They are being educationally stunted by this teacher-student ratio. To recap, three points. Money and tax revenue is coming from Lindcroft and should be part of the solution to fixing Lindcroft and the district's overpopulation in the school, in some schools and not others. Number two, replacing vacated positions post-haste is indeed necessary. And point three, utilizing the recently obtained addition to Lindcroft resident tax revenue toward designing and building an addition onto the current footprint of Lindcroft School should be considered. Increasing this class size as proposed is an unconscionable move by the Board of Education. It may not be our place as parents to plan for this or to deal with the unfortunate consequences. That is what we elected and trust the representatives of the Board of Education to do. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Travis Johnson. My family has been a part of this school district for at least 50 years. And just to riff on some of the stuff you guys said today, you're presenting this as a fluid situation, which makes me happy, but you should know that out in the world, it's not being presented as fluid to us to the extent of how people are hearing the information, to the extent that teachers are telling us, to the extent of how the administration is presenting the information, to the extent of how people are trying to apply for kindergarten until we're full. So, if this is fluid, that's awesome, let's talk about it, but that's not been what's presented. I personally love the volunteer in my child's school, everything from fun day being the dunk tank, working after school and doing the STEM with 25 energetic kids, holy cow, an appreciation for the teachers, we're going to do something like that. And I truly didn't want to be here, I don't want to be here, I don't think most people want to. I want to spend my time at the school, but forever, I figured the stewardship from you guys was great. That's why I'm here, that's why I live in Lindcroft, I've lived around the world, Lindcroft's where I want to raise my kids, Middletown's where I want to raise my kids. And all of a sudden, I realized, I feel like you guys are asleep at the wheel, not personally, but as an overarching theme is what I'm seeing. My first point of frustration is exactly what everyone said. We live in an age where we're getting emails and we get texts, awesome, from Mr. and Bendo every week, letting us know what to wear and what's going on at the school. What a great mode of communication, right? Texts and phone calls. We get emails or letters, excuse me, from the district if our kids are missing school or we're going to go arrive attendance policy, right? We get emails from our PTA, they have a Facebook group, we're blessed that, you know, members of the Board of Education come to those meetings and participate, yet we saw the result, right? One person out of something like 35 were aware of what's at hand, and today's the first time we've heard that this is a fluid situation. Ultimately, too, I want to remind you that this is us in 72 hours, okay? We'll fill this place up if this isn't addressed, and that's not like, to say anything more than we just have amazingly supportive people. We use the high school gym for our father-daughter dance for our elementary school. My second point of frustration is that, you know, the national average for elementary schools is 19 to 20 months. So, here we are in Middletown, New Jersey, like a leading place, like education is always talked about, and we can't even like come close to the national average. It's pathetic is the word, and I think we need to look at what decisions we're making, and we need to be a part of that. And ultimately, there's other students, as people have said, that are living within these standards, and now our children aren't going to be. I go to your own words, right? Everyone's kind of stated this, I didn't hear this talked about, so I'm excited because it feels a fresh point, and that's you look to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards, that's what you say for your mission. Two core things in life, right? English, language arts, and math, let's hit what they say here. "The importance of foundational skills in the early grades of student learning to read cannot be overstated and calls for targeted, sustained intervention at any point of struggle for a student." So, that's for language arts. My daughter, going to go from 19 to 27 kids, can I expect her to have 30% less targeted and sustained intervention this upcoming year? Will she have an equal opportunity for all the students in other schools? Come to math, the very first standard in math, equity. Excellence in mathematics education requires equity. High expectations, worthwhile opportunities, as we said, our students are going to lose some, accommodation for differences, resources, and strong support for all students. So, my son's going to enter kindergarten with 24 other students, and will he have that same strong support and accommodation for differences as someone in a class with 18? We all know the answer is no, right? Simple fractions, let's do a little math. If I split apart a whole into more parts, where we have smaller parts, and at the end of the day, our Lindcroft children are getting less. That's just the reality of it.
Excuse me, sir, you're approaching four minutes now, you're...
Sure, I'll finish the last five words. I'm simply asking for our children to have the same equal opportunity as the rest of our town, and for us to look in the mirror and recognize, we need to make the tough decisions to get this proud town back into national averages. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Claudia Saldivaro. I went to Lindcroft, my sister, my brother. I'm also a teacher. My mother was a teacher in Thompson. We all went through Thompson South. I'm going to teach for almost 20 years now. I just got back from the International Society of Technology Education Conference, where did some speaking, did lots of learning, part of an equity action group for the year. It's going to be an interesting project. But it comes down to, my daughter's going to enter third grade. She thinks she's dumb. She can't read. Simple as that. She's had teachers, we've done two different things, she can't read, she thinks she's dumb. She's being evaluated over the summer, breaks my heart. I've talked to Megan about this many times, but usually, she's in a class that's going to be with 25 kids. She's been in kindergarten with less, and she still can't read. My cousin's across, we have her nieces, my cousin, her cousin, wait, her cousin, my niece, is in another school, but she has 15 kids. It's not just parents talking, they sit there and compare. "How many kids do you have in your class, Valentina?" "I have like 24 or 25." And she's like, "Hmm, I have 17. I'm better than you." Okay, well, one is what nothing to do with the other, but even the opportunities are so different in the school, the ones being offered. They have technology all the time, they have different things, and we're supposed to be one district, and it's supposed to be similar or equitable all across the district, and it's not. My daughter's not getting what she needs. And I turn around, and people are like, "But you're in Middletown." I'm like, "I know." That's why I went back to Middletown, to get her the education that she needs. That's why many of us came, left, and came back, because we had a great education, we had wonderful opportunities, and we want the same for our kids. I want my daughter to go to the school and doesn't think she's dumb, because she still can't read, and we're finally getting evaluated, possibly for an IEP. I don't want that for her. She deserves better, just like everyone else does. And you can see, they said, this is what we did in like a day, two days, three days, and we'll start voting people out and bringing in new people, we're going to do, and help our kids. And most of us get into education to help our kids. We want to do what's best for the next generation, all of us, and sometimes things get lost. And we all would like to do better, and we want the best for our kids, and we will fight for it. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you all for your comments. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Oh, sorry. I need a motion to go into executive session to discuss those items that we discussed before.
It'd be the RFP for the Substitute Services Matters of Personnel in terms of finding privilege, news we take in, if we want to need a confidentiality notice, and action may be taken by the board in our meeting convenes in public session.
Okay. I need a motion. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? This meeting is now back in session. I need a motion to reopen the public session. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions?
Do we need another roll call?
Roll call.
Who's all in favor says, "No, no roll call."
No roll call. I need a motion to approve finance items one through 11, please.
Oh, it's just one item.
Okay. I need a motion to approve finance number 10, F10. Discussion. All in, discussion.
I'm going to vote yes for this, but I want on the record that our substitute personnel better be hired, because that's the way we explained it in the public, and that's the understanding that the substitutes have, and I don't want anyone out there thinking that we're outsourcing. When I voted to do this, and I resent the fact being, say that I don't put kids first, I really resent that fact, I voted just for this proposal because I knew we were shorthanded, I know we can't leave kids unattended. I'm a big component of special education, I'll vote for it because we have to start summer school next week, but I am not happy the way this went down.
Okay, I agree. All in favor?
We have to clarify that, like, I don't know, dude. We're not outsourcing, we're not outsourcing regular employees.
You just said that, we're not outsourcing regular.
Well, for paraprofessionals, we're using ESS to provide these services. Just make it very clear. Okay.
All in favor?
Yes. We didn't finish.
Okay, I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay, now, I need a motion to adjourn this meeting. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstent.